I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the ideal, liberty, and justice for all.
Do I have a motion of second agenda?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
I second. Could I amend that to include the extraction to the treasurer? So, to nail the dispersments as soon as possible?
I approve that minutes is written and make the, and approve that you pay, we should pay.
The dispersment.
The dispersment. As soon as possible.
I second that. All in favor of the consent agenda? I am. The next meeting of the board of selectmen will be Monday, February 24th, 2020, at 5:30 at the West Bath Town Hall. And under comments and announcements, we will be holding the much awaited Rhodes Workshop on Monday, March 2nd at 5:30 at the West Bath Fire Hall. This will be an opportunity for all of us to hear one another's concerns about road maintenance and the, here the proposed winter road maintenance contract in particular. Hoping to avoid some of the concerns that we had over the last three years with the first contract. We're going to improve on things, no doubt. Is there public comment? Yes, sir.
Trash still is a problem.
Trash still is a problem.
A truck broke down. It was, when I got there Saturday morning, it was quite a bottleneck, about eight to 10 vehicles. And the truck broken down. So they were just piling the bags of trash on the floor inside the building and haul off somehow later on. And some of the recyclers were either in the skid steer or in a can in the building. And they just got that truck sitting there and no one can, one car stops and everyone backs up and everyone's now going out the way you're supposed to come in and all, so it's been no improvement. I'll just leave it at that. And you folks have sent some comments to them or whatever.
That wasn't much better on Saturday. And I would echo those comments. I've got tangled up in it too.
Yeah. Can you give them a call? Oh, well. And at the very least, if they can't figure out how to run it, they could at least provide traffic instructors. Is there a comment from the public? Okay, moving on. The investment committee has met. Do you have recommendations?
Yes, we do. We met just a few minutes ago and we wanted to recommend to the selectmen that we leave the recent 131 2020 maturity funds in the Federated Government Obligation Fund. In other words, we're interested in keeping the money liquid, attending funding decisions on the fire truck.
And Julie, that?
I make a motion to accept the recommendations of the investment committee to leave the money as is.
All in. Okay. Guess we don't have to ask Julie to leave it where it is. She's gonna do that. Thank you. And... Oh, let's see. Okay, this is item number two, the reclassification of retirement benefits for special retirement programs available for firefighters and fire chiefs. That looks like something, you would know something.
Well, Julie's gonna be on this one too.
Oh, okay, alright.
There is a special rate for firefighters and it's 2.8% higher than the rest of us get. But it does, if you're interested, interested in the fire chief going into this rate.
Yeah.
It can only be changed July 1st or January 1st. And it needs to be voted by the town's governing body. So it would have to go to town meeting this year to vote.
Right.
To have the fire chief or any full-time firefighters to be in the special rate. And I also wanted to bring it to your attention because it's gonna be more for the budget process too.
Right.
So if you wanted to go ahead and offer it to him or not, it's 2.8% more and it's around $1,300 more that would go into his retirement. It's the employer's portion that is higher.
So it'd be, would it be pro-rated because he's a half-time CEO and that would be the regular, but he's a, just regular retirement would be 2% more?
Yeah, we could put it into the firefighter retirement.
Okay. So that would be something that we would, we would need to discuss as part of the budget process?
And it would have, also have to be a warrant article.
Yes, because it would be, it would be an exception to...
I would have to send a copy of the minutes to main state retirement.
Okay.
To be able to change his plan.
Okay. That seems like...
And she's told me she'd help me write the warrant article? The main state retirement?
They probably have some practice. Should we discuss that this evening or it doesn't seem to me that it should require a whole lot of discussion. It seems like a fair thing to do.
Well, the town decided ultimately, right?
Right.
So I think the only thing here would just be to read it for on the one?
Yep.
So vote, so vote.
Second?
Second.
All in. Putting this on the warrant.
So include that, additional amount of budget and I'll get the warrant article.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next up, Mr. Proo is here to tell us what's going on with Sabine.
Ian Burrow. Good evening, Tom Robpro from Pytr Engineering. Both your projects are on track. Our plan this winter is get Sabine Road up to date and get the permits filed for Bridge Point Road. So if you're authorized tonight, we're ready to advertise Sabine Road, both the culvert replacement and raising the road over the swamp. That I've reviewed the plans with Steve. That could be advertised for construction bids this week. We have a bid opening on March 5th if that works for the town schedule, right here at the town office. Then you would know what your exact price is for budgeting. And as a reminder, you do have the culvert grant from the DEP to go towards that. The permits were received from the Corps of Engineers and the DEP last year.
Yeah.
So it's been a little bit of a long haul, but we're there. So permits are in place. The only thing I worry about is construction costs are really high these days as you've probably written in the paper.
Yeah.
It is what it is, nothing we can do about that. So advertising now is the best time before people get too busy. So that was always the plan, was to advertise it for the winter. Last year, that's on good permits, it was August, so it was not the time to try to do that.
Right, everybody have a warrant, they can tell.
That's right.
Yeah. Well, I make a motion that we... Yep, whoops.
Do you dare to estimate how much this project's now gonna cost? Not the concrete one, the record, just the...
Of course, no, but...
It's like, it's like 280,000.
That's probably, probably you're talking in that ballpark, I think. One thing we did do last time we met, I was looking at concrete box culvert.
Right.
We've gone away from that and we're using a multi-plate arch now. It's less expensive and then the box culverts, getting them, say to me and Steve can attest to it, very difficult. It's only two manufacturers in the state to make the larger ones. And it doesn't take them very long to be booked up for the season.
Yeah.
So we've had a couple of other projects, one in Pittsburgh, get locked in here because it couldn't be fabricated. So we started looking at the other options. So what this will be is a multi-plate, which is multiple sheets together. The open bottom on concrete footings. So that's what we're proposing now, so. So I think price-wise, we should still be there.
So 300,000?
That's my best guess.
Or so, yeah.
Unquoted.
No, no. Does Julie have any idea what the lifespan is on that ox culvert?
Oh, yeah, well, over our lifetimes. It's, you know, talking 50, 75 type of years, so. The open bottom is good, you know, it's contact with the water, but the bottom of the plate will be, but that's it. We're running beef up the size of the thickness, two, two times, just different thicknesses of the plate you can get.
And you've used this before?
Yes, yeah, very common practice.
Okay, that sounds good.
How, where are we with the clearing of the...
Well, it's not, 80% done. We just still gotta, I wanna fix one stream that goes in to it and then I wanna order that seam, everything I can make. We made a quite a mess in there and I just wanna clean it all and hay everything up and make it look...
It's flowing quite well.
Yes.
I can drive by it every day and wonder...
The pictures really show how much debris was in the stream.
Is there any way that we can post these with the forwards and afters? Cause they're...
Yeah, that's actually about a hat mile in the woods, that picture right there.
This one?
And we had so many trees that we were able to take the chipper, the chip, bunch of chips over everything.
Oh.
But they looked decent, more even up towards the road we're in. It was really tough, people, what's, what happened over the years since that? Some people built some dams and they wanted to hear the waterfall, took over the rocks. So when I took that out, that dropped a default foot and a half and then drained the other stuff. So I'd say we'd actually dropped that on three feet.
How low is the level, like, that's what, culvert now?
A foot.
Below the level of the lip?
It, it looks like it's running about this high in it when I drive by it. There's very, very little water coming through right now.
Right, but when you look at the other side, the water on the other side is down a foot from that, so. It really came up quick. I am gonna make a suggestion that it's something that we go down and maybe do it in five years. I mean, not as spent digging it out, but at least cleaning the debris that's out.
Yep.
Cause what happens is a few trees and stuff fall over, cleans it out, the leaves build up soil, but it just keeps building up there, so. I think it should be put on a magnet for a way to keep it clear so that it can be set to stand for next time.
Keep an eye on it.
And so is it done all the way through now? I think you started from the back end and then...
Exactly, from the back, yeah.
And so you're done?
Yeah, well, in the front there, where it comes down alongside the road, I noticed they put another ditch that goes straight up the woods and then connects that down in there further.
On the upstream side of the culvert?
Yeah, way up.
Way up.
From where the road's sinking. They cut another path over there and meets down in the Tidbrook. So I'm just thinking, it might be a good idea to go up through and clean that along there. So you gotta take that one there.
Heading closer to the dam road, heading, it's almost with the Y that it comes?
Yes, you'll, you'll see it there and there's a, a country that goes over that goes around and comes up down by, the guy's house. He took it to dance, he really liked what, what came out of it.
Well, it looks like a park. I was waiting for like a heavy rain, I'm like, let's see what it's gonna do.
There's no way we, we could've done that in the summer either, this, I mean...
We don't make the rumors.
That was, that was a wise to jump on it when it was frozen. And it wasn't really frozen, frozen, we'd be working, the excavator, I had hawks and they were this excavated, two of the cuts, trees down and the chipper, and here's swinging a tree around and I'd feel the whole ground go like this smoke. It's very, I don't know, I'd say 100 feet bad. Water just floats.
Above.
Well, now we're ready for the motion. I make a motion that we advertise now for the RFPs for Sabine Road.
And use that call we gave us?
More or less, anything less than that.
I can't see more than road for that.
I agree, that's just, it's just something that we have to do and we're gonna have to find the money and it's gonna happen.
My second motion, on paper.
It's been about 25 years since the last time we brought that road up. And when we brought it up last time, that road was only half that width, that was about 15 feet. We why even helped, plus brought it up, so all that dirt.
Yeah, put mats, put mats back too, right?
I don't know, I don't, is that...
We're not a family.
Yeah, I think there was mat underneath the road before.
Oh, I don't know. The issue is there's a peat on some of the, peat on that has no lawn, so.
Right, and there were, there were concerns, Rob, about, about the condition of the Sabine Road after one of the big rains. Would you just speak to that?
Sure, Christine asked me to take a look at it, went down the week before last. And, yeah, I mean, right now you've got differential frost even. You've had a very wacky winter with all this rain and cold over the weekend, you know, so that road is a mess as we all know. So, you know, you get some cracks that are probably that wide right now. Kind of a temporary condition, once the frost and the tunnel will settle back down. If you really were concerned about it, it didn't look like to be an unsafe condition to me. Is it rough? Yes, well, if you're not trying to drive 60 across there, then you can be fine. I mean, you could put coal badge in the cracks if you wanted to, but it's not gonna be that effective. We know that we're gonna reconstruct this this year. So we wouldn't get too concerned with it. But it is frost even. When it did flood, that pour water under the road base, it then freezes, so. Now, the whole area that was interesting, we had to break in the culvert, but it also drains from the side of the road. Sounds like you live up there, so you know. So there's two different channels that we need to get the water coming along the road to get down there as well, that's across this culvert. So with the work that Steve did, I think that's gonna help out a lot just to get to... And we're gonna raise that approximately three feet at the most, at the side.
Yeah. And are we gonna ditch some other things along there too, or?
Pretty much, ditched there already, it just was caught up downstream.
I almost think that this week we fill it up here, this side, to get it to go better.
And with the culvert, there'll be guardrails, wider shoulders off the guardrails.
Right.
Cause you're gonna have, the culvert's five foot three inch rise, so it's gonna be quite a drop off.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we can assure people that in your best professional estimate, it is not a safety risk?
Correct.
I thought she was gonna try to hold us with that.
I've never been that before.
Okay, there it is. As March 5th will be fine for a bid opening if that was...
March 5th works.
Yeah, that'll be great.
Alright, so we'll have that in the office. So we'll advertise that this week.
Good.
Would you advertise that?
We'll advertise it, the town's record for a day. People don't use the newspaper a lot anymore. There's construction agencies, bulletins, we, we send all the ads to Georgia Bulwars, construction summary, works in progress, contracts, subscribe to these agencies, that's how it works. And there's also a public, you know, sponsor credit with town's records. You can go online, check public notice and you'll see that there.
So the local contractors, if they want to bid, they'll know about this?
You can go to the town website as well, if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so we can send you the ad to put on the website. It's pretty much the only, that's the advertising we typically do.
No, okay. Then I'll draw as we pick up the...
Yes, we'll, we'll administer the bidding, everything from our office, the town offices have to deal with it. We keep a list of the plant holders, we actually get the plans from us. In case there's any addendums or anything, then we'll process that and then I'll come over with Christine to develop it. And we'll review the bids afterwards.
Yeah, sounds good. And then you'll award them on March 9th if they're here again. Good.
Now, do you have this project audited?
Yes.
Thank you for asking, somebody go.
Yeah, we really recommend that all public projects of any size be audited project. General State laws will maintain that. Now, there is one last detail. I know Steve talked to some of the residents, we need some easements, particularly for the temporary road that we have to put around the culvert, must have a well-pride property. Christine, I thought you had spoken to Steve.
I actually did, as she came down, worked out there and I mentioned it to her again and she said whatever we need to do.
Is this the Sugar Hill Road?
It's a very nice one.
Yeah, but I don't think she owns that strip along the road.
She does.
That's Steve's.
It's, I prefer the way he owns, she owns up there by the, by her driveway.
By the town tax match, does that move along a lot there?
Well, she says she, but also the other guy, I spoke with him too and he doesn't have a problem, he's up on the other corner, right?
And then I, it's another strip, it's weird, I mean, really tax match, but. I mentioned Christine, we ought to get that in writing from your easements. I have some templates which you can work through.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful.
Just to get everyone writing.
Get it documented.
Cause there'll be a couple places, the slopes extend beyond the imaginary runway line and just want to document that, that was. I'm not taking anybody's land, it's just the full slopes. But the temporary road definitely is outside the runway.
Yeah, yeah, I recall that. That's been part of the, that's been part of the plan for a while.
All along, you know, typically we close roads down for a week to do these type of projects, but this road we can't.
Well, everybody went to the grocery store and got everything. And nobody, and everybody promised not to get sick.
Yeah.
That would be fine.
And no fires?
No fires, no, no, no emergencies.
No school?
Oh, no school, kids were...
It's like anyone, could you host a party?
Sure.
What's the big party? Let's see, come to town home.
Do it Sabine. There you go. Business item four, 2021 oil pricing.
One question, he was gonna talk about Bridge Point?
Oh, that's right, oh, I'm sorry.
I can give you a quick update on that.
Yeah.
We put the public notice in the paper the other day, the town's record, sent out certified slip to the abiders, so that private process is underway. We got the application in check from Julie and Christine the week before last, so we're ready to submit that formally now. So that whole process is rolling out. Once we get the permits for that, then we can talk, you know, get a bid package out for that. This is for the slope work, Steve was also talking about doing some road work. We don't need the permits for road work, it's slope stabilization. So we get a permit from the DEP and the Corps of Engineers, same, similar routine.
You know them well anyway.
That's...
You know them well.
Yeah, doesn't help though.
It's not a similar timeline.
What's that?
He said it's not a similar timeline and that it'll just take...
As long as this other one?
Yeah.
I don't think so, unless they have some real regulation issues with what we wanna do, but I don't foresee it, but.
Thank you. Okay, what else did I forget?
That's it for me.
Thank you, Rob, thank you. Okay, business item four, 2021 oil pricing.
Yes, we have an offer from Anadew Sewell for 2.079 per gallon, which is 17 cents less per gallon than last year. So the market is very favorable to buyers right now. So if you would like to consider that offer, it's due by 10 a.m. tomorrow morning. And if you take the offer, you are walked in at that price? Yes.
And I was listening to the news this morning, why the price is low. It's certainly because with the virus, they're not currently buying oil, so there's a reserve of oil right now, so the likelihood if that ends, the price will probably go down.
Yeah. I was advised that the market's pretty volatile right now, keeps going up and down.
What was the price, Christine?
2.079.
I'd like to walk that in. Is that a motion?
What was that?
Shall we walk it in? That's a motion.
Yes.
Is that a second?
Second.
That's, that's all in paper.
Is this for the school as well?
I believe it was for all of the town.
I believe so.
Since the town's covering the debt.
I just, just was clarifying.
Two, yes. 7,500 gallons of number two heating oil for the above timeframe.
Yeah, then it does.
To the West Bath Town Office and the West Bath School at 2.079 per gallon.
Just checking.
So... It's you first. They're taking your signature on that one, alright?
Very good.
Alright, none of us of us need to walk it in.
Right.
Let's call them and see if we can do that for home. Business item number five, the election warrant. Charlie, take it away.
Alright, we do this every election, we need to post the warrant calling all residents to come and vote. It's March 3rd at the Fire Hall. So I just made a motion to, what caused the warrant? Are you, the, the motion that we post the warrant?
On second. It's all in paper. Let's do it. The polls will be open Tuesday, March 3rd, from 8 to 8 at the West Bath Fire Hall. Everybody, for the election worker. Town administrators' update.
I have a fairly brief update tonight. I noticed when I came to work on Friday that our toter for compost was overflowing. So I contacted the recycling committee who immediately got in touch with Garbage to Garden and I've asked them to take on an additional toter because in the past month or so, we've been exceeding capacity quite often. So my understanding is that an additional toter is $12 a week. And we have 20 weeks left in the year, so $240. Should be able to absorb it within their budget. But in the event that we don't, I will take responsibility for it. I don't want critters being attracted because we have food items on the ground.
Yeah.
So just wanted to make you...
It's good, people are using it.
That's probably a small one with a ribbon, fox and something like that.
Yeah, and I actually saw somebody drive up on Friday and then put their compost back in their truck and drive away because it was overflowing.
Well, that was very responsible of that person.
It was, it was very responsible, so.
I, I have a comment that you might wanna explore. When we weren't a resident for, what, in West Bath unfortunately for 12 months, because we sold our home and had moved into our new one, we rented in Bath, very near a well-established compost station by the same company out of Portland. And they had two of those buckets or barrel, whatever you wanna call them. The big green thing is dump your compost in. Both of them were larger than the one that's here. I wonder if you could ask them why they have the tiny one here versus...
My understanding is that was a mistake, that they actually switched one out when we, and then forgot to bring back our larger toter.
Just go for a large one then and have a second.
Yeah, I think, I think that will get taken care of. My understanding is that the recycling committee has asked for two of the larger ones. So I'm hoping that that's what will happen. It would make sense.
When, before the thing got torn up in the wind, they had a larger one out there.
Yes.
And then suddenly this small one showed up. I'm using it, so I keep track of what's going on out there. And I thought it was kinda crazy, I, it wasn't overflowing, but it was near capacity when I used it most recently.
Would one large take care of the need?
I would just think it would increase going forward and I don't think it's gonna get...
I don't think it's gonna get less.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think we're really gonna need more.
Yeah, I have to, I have to admit that I was a doubter. I'm not a doubter anymore.
People seem to really like it.
Yeah.
And while we're talking about this, Madeline, maybe we should talk about their request to have another informational session.
Yes, let's do it. They are interested in a particular piece of legislation, and they have had one, one meeting about it. They wanted to have another, and because they're a committee of the select board, they would like to have our blessing for the meeting. We're not endorsing anything. We're endorsing them having informational meeting.
What do you think?
I'm fine with them having another meeting.
Yeah.
So we're endorsing them having another meeting?
Yes.
They should feel free to set their date and make arrangements for their meeting.
I'll let them know. You'll notice in your packet that I've updated the budget calendar a little bit. The information session that was scheduled for May fifth has been rescheduled, I mean, I'm sorry, it was scheduled for May twelve. It's been rescheduled to May fifth, which is the week prior. Suzanne asked that it be switched around, and that seemed to make sense. So if everybody's available on that date, we'll just have it two weeks before town meeting rather than one.
Does that include the public hearing appeal?
Yes. And our last budget committee session that was scheduled for last Thursday was, of course, canceled. So we'll be meeting again this Thursday, hopefully weather will be well. And if we're not able to take care of everything in that night, we'll just have another meeting.
And that's here? That's seventh?
Yeah.
Have we changed the twenty eighth to the twenty third?
I'm saying, it's probably a different date.
Oh, this is for?
Yeah, the community agencies are on the twenty fourth. And the twenty seventh will be another meeting if we need it. But this is the schedule. Now I'm second guessing myself dates. And the community agencies on a Monday or a Tuesday?
Monday night.
Okay, that's what I thought. So this is correct. The community agencies will be on February twenty-fourth. And then if we need another meeting to make up for the one that was canceled, it will be on the twenty-seventh.
Okay. That makes sense.
Correct.
So just gonna follow the selectings meeting?
Yes.
That is correct. You'll also notice in your packet that there is an email about the mountain road. Again, a winter road maintenance issue. I don't know if you have anything to say about the quality of the snow removal over the weekend.
Well, we rolled around for the kind of weather we had and the ice that we had, I really think they did a pretty good job. I didn't find that I needed to call, I was, I actually filed hard ridge down there. I do the, so I'm down there two or three times this storm. Yeah, a couple nights, the ice was built up, but I'm sorry, you just can't help it.
I would say, I should have drove to Augusta this morning. Harry is worried I have.
Well, that's just, you know, I, I concentrate mostly because they were missing it at first. And so I went to talk to them, and I said, you guys need to get on this, get the brine out and leave the brine on it, because they were putting the sand out, getting the brine just working, and then power it on. So that, that wasn't doing any good. That was just wasting a lot of sand and stuff. So I think what happened on the mountain road, where they didn't have as much traffic, it might have built up a little bit more ice.
Yeah.
So it was just one of those.
It was an hot storm.
But other than that, going around the town, I really think they did a pretty good job. They made a good account. I mean, they're using an awful lot of sand, but I'm glad they haven't used a lot of sand right now. Let's get through this one area and go from there.
Yeah. And I contacted Ben as well, and he indicated that he had some positive feedback about how they dealt with this particular weather event. So I think we're okay. But I'll respond to the person who was concerned.
I think Friday and today would be difficult traveling days period.
Yeah.
It was terrible up there. It was, and that's a male, we paid up pretty good to have. I go to, add it the next day, that's all. These guys don't know what they have down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to, I would imagine it is very difficult to do winter road maintenance when the road is covered in ice. How much can you do with ice?
And how much are you speaking about? People, you know, they finally find outlets and they're thinking that we can just go right out and fix them. Well, you get frost, you get everything else, and this costs a lot more to try to fix something like that. It's not that we're ignoring it for nothing. It's, you just can't do this type of thing. I think one of the people that we have an invisible.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a question. When you, do you do, you just drive around after a storm and check out what's going on?
No.
No?
No, I go when somebody got the calls, complaints.
Because I, when, if you were to do that, I'd like to do a drive along and see our roads so that I can comment when people have questions. I'd be happy to co-pilot with you sometime and just so I can see what it looks like.
I did, on this ice zone, and I've been watching good old old folks. I've been doing, I never, as far as like these couches and stuff, I get a complete Calio following, a Julio following, and I'll go down and look at it.
If you have time, let me know, I'll, I'll drive along with you.
Yeah. We also received a letter from Monty Vogel that in, have in your packet. It's regarding the Sabino boat launch. And he has some ideas about how to improve the launch area. You might want to take a look at that and see if you want to include any money in the next budget for improvements.
Okay.
I also heard there was a lot of grants out there for boat launches. So that might be something we might want to look into anyways.
But I think we'd want another opinion besides this one here, what he's asking. I would want another opinion.
Oh, yes.
Right, but understand, there's, there's some grants out there that's something we should jump on.
Right, but just saying how wide, what slide, cast iron rods, it looks like it could be pretty expensive.
Yeah, well, I'm not going down the town or on the land out there. So the more you make out there, the less parked vehicles or anything else. So it's not likely to put a full-blown boat launch down there.
Well, it's not designed to be that. And there's a lot of kind of, some of the cars and trailers left down there when they go out in their boats, which then just consumes it for the rest of the community. So it's not, we need to find a way to just manage it.
And you can just barely turn the pile truck around out there, because that street where the pile trucks turn around and come back. Somebody leaves a bolt in a trailer there because they're out claiming or whatever, it, it makes it a lot more.
But this says a floating dock, so it's not a gold rock or soil or park. Then we'd be liable, insurance wise, or?
We would be. On that.
And the same thing with the concrete blocks. For example, there's certain grades you gotta run down at, and the time that you got done, you'd be halfway up the.
I just find that hard to swallow, just approving this Sabino.
But if there's a, if there's a grant, I have no problem with a grant. I would cover some of it.
Yeah, and I'll check the timing of the grants.
And I don't believe there's something we can do that.
There's a huge drop off at the bottom, there's a road away, but it's, I'm not sure a whole dock system needs one there, but there could be some repair work that.
You're probably saying that things we try, we don't want to try anymore. I think when we were down there last summer with some of the people from the Sabino Association, there was a very casual conversation about some extra land that wasn't being used by the association. So at some point, we may want to have some more formal discussions about whether or not to build an actual. Was it?
But we also had discussion down there that they said they didn't really want all the extra traffic.
Right.
Well, liability to the haul. You start putting stuff down there, it takes on, if they're gonna be parking on the haul land, they're not gonna want to do it.
But I thought there was a citizen that was supposed to come in and talk to us, and they never did. And they didn't do it. And I think they're not interested. Well, I was just gonna say, I thought there would, someone who was supposed to come present it, and it never happened.
But it is a very dangerous landing.
It is.
Something you gotta get down or should be shot down, because somebody's gonna end up losing a vehicle there or.
Yeah, because we have liability either way. You know?
I'm reading that, it's terrible.
So as bad as it is, do you have some kind of barrier or just letting people?
I think we should, before you close down a landing there, I think you, you're gonna have an uproar.
No, you can't close it down.
No, it's a public landing.
It's used by a lot of people.
I, I think you have a problem with that. If there's a grant to repair it, terrific, we can look into that. Or there's, and maybe wait and see what that yields before we make any determinations on whether or not.
But feasibly, the only people that can use that right now is the fishermen down there. Do we have signs up down there to say pass at your own risk? Or do we have anything to protect us from?
There's a sign there, I believe, for permit parking, isn't there?
Yeah, so.
You have to, you have to come here to get a permit.
There's a permit parking on there.
So you can't, it's, it is monitored, because you have to consider ability of permits. Because the permits are good for one year, but. Well, it used to be, if you're gonna park there, and if you leave your trailer down there, you lose your permit, because it's not someone's private property.
I think it would be a bad, you see this with a sign saying, use it at your own risk.
Right, right.
This, yeah. This is just nothing.
Do you have one of those signs in your, in your sign?
I don't, but we can have one there.
We should have it added to the West Bath permit. On the bottom of that sign where you get a permit, it also says, use it at your own risk, which is a part of the same, you bring a mega sign? Make it all one sign.
I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll put the poster, and I'll hang the sign. We'll be together with Julie or Julie or Cali and tell them what you want on it. It'll be tonight.
I would put a separate sign, even if it looks like it's a separate.
Most of the, the packet now, the use down there, it's smaller boats. Nor is there a large boat being sized down.
No, you can't say that, you're ripping one more.
Even the airboats are.
Yeah, but it's smalls.
Right, you know, you know.
Oh, no.
Airboats go down.
I did see a smart car drive and launch something down there, which was.
That's gonna be the one who would do that, doesn't typically use them. Right.
And, and for those signs, I think I've ordered two of them, you don't want that? I have that one down there. I need to order the two.
Did they say, they missed the first one, you think?
Yes. They have similar signs down to the overall.
The similar ones over the soy.
No, I was, I don't know.
I don't see any down here.
And I think we're, I think a sign down there too, sign at the times.
There should be, use it at your own risk.
Yeah.
But it should be on the West Bath sign, so it's all part of the same sign that covers us then.
Should we do it all the landings though?
Yes.
Wouldn't that?
I think we should.
Because the one, next to me doesn't say that.
Oh, great. You have the mountain road, Volverock, Sabino, and the Meadows. Like.
Are they, do they all have permit parking as well?
No.
You can't park. Like, use it at your own risk.
Use it at your own risk and have a great car.
You could probably put a whole list of things, don't leave your boat there, you know, or any.
Any buttons.
We can have it, but they renew their permit.
The sign that says you can't leave the boat or the trailer or that. Because that's, that's what they just.
Should be the application to include.
But doesn't say at your own risk. And the parking is, you're on a state road, so.
Hold on.
Yeah, similar rule.
What would you say, Christine?
Well, it's just weird, you know, we should, when they come in to renew their permits this year, it should be acknowledged when they sign for their permit, I acknowledge that if I leave my, whatever I do, that I may lose my permit access. So that they admit, and they, on when they sign off there, admit taking responsibility, and I'm parking at my own risk and sign it at the time they request their permit.
Because it's, it's really unfit for the public. If these people were working on the way to use it and, they have to, but if I was simply the, the public, I'd have to see whether they could even use it anyways.
No, we can't. That's that one person from trying.
We, we've tried, we've tried to take our boat down there, and we can't get it in because there's two trailer parked there.
Yeah. And if you got it.
Well, so we'll see what we can do. Then we'll see if we can get some enforcement.
Yeah, something else that, that probably needs the maintenance get to, I mean, who's in charge of these boat landings and stuff?
We are.
So you should have some kind of maintenance, mechanism of maintenance, something on.
Let's see what the grants come up with. Before we put any maintenance plans in place, let's find money elsewhere.
I think he's got a point, because a grant could be a couple of years' time.
Right, and they, and they need, they need work. They just do.
Right.
So what would be, I'm just asking, would it be appropriate to ask the road commissioner to take a look at those and just give us advice, or do we look towards somebody else? I think it would be, our first choice would be the road commissioner. And we could authorize the road commissioner. If he chooses to involve other experts, then.
I think it's really out of my responsibilities that, I think we should get somebody that deals with boat lands, that boat ramps and stuff like that, and make game of, instead of getting somebody who's filling under the bus saying, well, I did that, it didn't work.
Generally, the harbor master wouldn't be able to offer his opinion as well.
I'd be more.
We just asked the road commissioner, and he, he asked for expert, that was fast.
Well, it's just like legalized, I mean, legally these signs, that's why I had to push that away. They've actually got to be written and written, or.
Right.
I mean, just pick everything.
Well, I think you got a point. It would be nice to have somebody who has, has a expertise in this area to see if this is something we can hold off and wait for grants, or do we have a danger at one of these sites that we should be addressing.
And I can say that Rob Crew has done boat land. She's, he's.
Well, now you say it, now it is gone.
You know, you didn't bring it up till then.
And you're probably gonna find, you go anywhere to Sabino, you can see Army Corps.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I want to do that.
Anyone, anywhere that we.
Is Mr. Ballon, was that something he could?
I think he should at least be asked his opinion about what should happen in the world.
He's probably seen other ramps that work well, that.
Well, most of the.
Right, and, and it's gonna be the same kind of construction engineering that we're gonna have to do with anything, because what's under the boat ramp is gonna make a difference.
But you need to keep in mind, as we said before, there's no parking down there. You can't launch any boat of any size, if you did, we're leaving trailer, I mean, it's just, it's not a.
It's not designed to be a public.
Landing, it's, it's commercial landing, basically for, for the selfish people.
I just think for someone to take a look.
Yeah, I, I was.
We don't need to, to move on this, we don't need to jump on this, but it'd be nice to know, maybe that ten-year plan down the road.
Agreed, but we're just gonna, you have to mind, we gotta find parking down there.
And the residents aren't gonna give it up, because it's the land. So it's, so it's not gonna be a public access point ever.
Well, I think we gotta build the signs for now.
Right.
And that ten-year down the road plan, we need to fix.
That place is not, it's not really built or set up or designed for boat land. That's why, if we can just close it, but I know your commercial fishermen and stuff like that use it, and we gotta eat a little bit.
Well, it's a natural boat land.
Yeah, that's natural, all right.
It's not meant to be.
Yeah, and what you do is you're getting back up real quick, slam on the brakes, slip the boat off.
Hope I can make it back up there.
Okay, what else we got, Christine?
What else we got this week?
I would like an opportunity to have everybody take a look at our beautiful pot, Boston Post cane, that we're going to deliver to the eldest person in town of Westbach. You wanna pass it around so everybody can.
We know who that person is?
We do, we do.
Are you raising cane or? No.
After you said you won tonight, you're kinda slow. The pace.
Not as nice as the one that J-Lo used at the, uh, Super Bowl, but.
Do you want?
But it has more tradition.
Oh, she had cane.
There's been started.
Also, right?
We should.
Peter Francisco's hearing.
Any others?
That's all I have tonight.
I'm working on it.
You have the nine.
I'm working on it.
No, that's just for your, your information.
Okay.
Has this been cane and tried out, or been tried out?
I just wanna know it.
I tried the last Charlie, you know. She backed too quickly.
When are we getting the cane out?
All right, people, we are entirely enjoying ourselves way too much and we are coming. Back order, please. Yes, the, the cane will be awarded at the, the, the plan was at town meeting. The person doesn't have to be in, in the meeting to receive it, we will deliver it.
Need some glasses or something.
Uh-huh. Also, for public information. The Department of Marine Resources is holding a public hearing to take evidence on an agriculture lease for Peter Francisco and the public hearing is going to be March tenth at six o'clock at the Firehouse. And the information is that any interested person may attend the hearing and ask questions of the party, or testify under oath.
Where's his little man?
No, no, the land, so the, as Peter, I was sitting in the middle ground.
East of the middle ground.
He's existing, he is existing with it.
He has to have an alpine. And before we meet as the board of assessors, I wanted to update the update on the rabid foxes. In response to the recent article in the Times Record, I made a call to the United States Department of Agriculture, which for some reason, rabies is a federal thing. So I finally was able to talk to the person who is currently in charge of this program. He informed me that they are only in the preliminary stages of investigation with the city of Bath about a program. I said that I thought that the town of Westbach ought to be involved in any such program, or at least should have the information about it, and he said, oh, Westbach is a separate municipality, and I said, yes, we are. So, what I would, what I think he would be helped by is if we make an official request of the USDA that we be considered in any local planning about rabies eradication. And I would make that a motion.
A second.
Any further discussion? It's, the USDA gets involved if there's baiting or trapping involved. And the question of the young man, I presume he's young, because he had to check all the way up through the chain before he could get back to me. The question that the representative said was whether or not there are resources available to, to deal with the problem. I was gentle and refrained from saying what I thought, which is, doesn't matter how many resources there are, we need to have those resources here, cause we have people being bitten by rabid foxes. I'll say that in a second conversation. But the meeting with the Bath city manager is on Thursday, and that apparently is not a meeting that was going to be invited to.
Are you now?
No. We're going to be out for the conversation. House member, if we pass my motion, I'll call it back and let him know that we have this. With authorization from the, from the board to pursue.
I move that we participate in the bath as a joint effort with the USDA.
I don't think, I don't. Or in the meeting, I don't think we can invite ourselves to the meeting. I think we have to be, include ourselves if there's a regional solution being proposed. Cause I, I don't think we can convince the USDA to sign it before they're ready to commit. What I'm asking for is just.
General knowledge too, I did talk to Senator King's office and Senator Pender, and I haven't gotten a response back from either one yet.
Representative?
Yes, I will follow up on that, um, have, I don't understand, there was a lot going on within last week, so I probably have another priority list. But we may also want to reach out to our legislators.
Yes.
And see if we can get some help with this.
Yes, it's, it's more difficult, apparently because it's a federal program, and I, I don't know why that is.
Yeah, and Senator King's office also said it had to be the USDA.
Yeah, livestock?
It's livestock protection, that's where it comes underneath USDA.
Okay.
Well, that rabid foxes need to be protected? No, the town.
No, if you're out of cattle, cattle hogs, the minute you're out for cattle hogs, those USDA is doing a big money.
Okay.
Oh, so we need somebody's pig to be attacked?
Probably get faster reaction than us getting a bit, yeah.
We.
Or a dairy farm.
Wow, that's awful. What about chickens?
Well, there was a guy that came into the store this weekend and said he saw several out where they had those bison, but we weren't there, he saw several.
Okay, I got a couple stories for you on this. I actually talked to the fire chief of Bath this weekend, and I spoke with the chief of police in Bath. And this morning stopped ringing off the hook since it's all erupted from bringing these other people in, if you wanna bring in.
Yeah.
It's pros and cons, big time on that, so you might as well look into that. And for example, behind my shop this weekend, a fox came up and they had walrus up there, taking care of these things, and the guy saw the fox there and he sent their whistle into it and cornered it. Well, when he cornered it, the fox attacked it, and they shot the fox. Fox did not have brains. So.
Yeah.
You gotta be careful how you do that.
There's also a report of a lady on Fox's point feeding the foxes.
Right, well, that's just why this one here did this, that people have been feeding these foxes behind a fire, I remember now for years, so the foxes somewhat came.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I'm just saying, before you jump into too much of Bath, just try to follow the flow, see how they're going before you make too quick decisions on it. I mean, basically what they gotta do, I guess they're trying to get them to do is just trap them now.
Yeah.
But someone was telling me you can't trap rabid foxes, cause they're not interested in food.
Well, I don't, I don't know, but I know they can't check them for rabies unless they kill them.
Right.
So it's like, this is where the problems come in.
Right. And part of the problem is the baiting is also not effective.
Right.
Good.
And it's, or not as effective as we would want it to be.
Just, I think, I haven't seen a fox in quite a while.
Never been there.
Right in, right?
They were next door on Sunday.
I had rabies one of those summer.
I know my daughter's lost only thirty chickens.
And that's not a USDA, they're not worried about the chickens?
I don't.
Well, maybe. Well, look into the chickens, I mean, that's.
You said they're not.
I, I, my sense is that it's, the chickens are, that are getting affected are, you know, somebody's backyard chickens, they don't care about that. They care about the new chicken house where.
Your costume.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so there is a motion on the Florida request involvement. A second, you wanna vote on that? Yes, we do.
I see.
All on paper. All requesting involvement. Well, I will talk to, um, his name is Ben Nugent. I'll talk to him later in the week and email him and let him know that we have this motion. Okay, that was us acting as the.
Wait, I have, do we need to sign Darlene's?
Yes, thank you, thank you. That's the one I have to.
Thank you very much, Susan.
Need for tomorrow. So is that a motion?
I move that we sign Darlene Astor Brooks, uh, planning board chair position.
Okay.
Okay. And I, just in case people here don't know, we interviewed a lot of candidates for that position, which was very, very interesting, and I think, um, showed that we have a lot of talent in the town, so I, I really liked that process.
It was, it was fun to have more than one person volunteering for, for a very important position.
And there's still openings on the planning board?
Not as of now.
There are openings on the board of assessment review, if anyone's interested in serving the community.
Excellent.
Could any of those candidates be considered?
If they want.
Well, Kerry's over there on the board of appeals.
Yes.
All of them now, yeah.
Okay, now what else did we forget?
Hopefully nothing.
All right, now, acting in the capacity of board of assessors, we have some abatements to consider.
Yeah, we do.
Thank you, Steve. That really is. It is. It looks amazing, and it's, I was hoping it's for a good reason, but I really see it. No, it's just a drizzle. We'll get one.
Yes. That was, that was amazing. Yes.
That's the important.
Okay, thank you.
That's really better cane. I'm just confused where I'm supposed to put that. Once and if, probably some of those people are going to be out there, you know.
My break though.
It's, it's.
This, this shuts for shutters, cause I don't get copies. Okay.
Thank you. Have a good evening. It's always nice to have you guys here.
I have all of my suits. I have, I'll be back tomorrow.
Well, they probably won't be as much fun as we are.
This is redesigned commercial street.
Oh, that's not gonna be fun at all.
Probably really be out.
Good luck.
Very.
All right, what we got?
We'll take the simple one first.
Okay. Which one is that? Well, that we got.
That is for, uh, let's see. It's a ball king. That's not probably.
Okay. Build for transmitter twice?
Uh, yeah, there was, there's a little bit more to it than that, they, I didn't realize I had two accounts, and I had, whatever, I was steering them in the right direction, but over and over and finally I, I did see where they, they had one item that was on both accounts. Most of the others were underwritten, so, and that was for a transmitter.
Yeah.
And that, the value of the transmitter is, they were charged ten, eight fifty-two, double tasked, which relates to back on around thirteen ninety-five. And then it's personal property.
So they only have one transmitter?
They only got one, yeah. But they had two, two accounts and they never, well, I agree with them, I agree with them, so, finally, okay, I said, I'll, I'll eliminate one of the accounts and put whatever is on that account, on one account next year. But, yeah, that did slip by, I think I'll go.
Okay.
Make seventeen and forty-two, seventeen and forty-five, if there was.
So, we should, I move that we grant the abatement to Spock Inc., account number seventeen.
For one eight, one thirteen ninety-five?
Yes, for the value of one fifteen ninety-five.
I second that.
Any further discussion?
All on paper. Yeah, you wanna start signing? Who's gonna?
She's gonna keep it.
Okay.
So send it this way.
Oops.
Sorry, I have it in my order here then. And. Come on out.
One done.
You've been busy.
This was, uh, if you're ready, I guess I, yeah, that's fine, probably I'll read it first.
Okay.
Okay, this was brought to my attention by a guy that wanted to rent this cottage. And he said, I can't find it on my tax back from the, from that month. I says, gotta be that, and lo and behold, it was never there.
Why would it?
Uh, a visionary. So he could only supplement for three years, so I did, I supplemented for three years, took it right to the value that I had on it. Sent three supplemental tax bills to, to Van Stoppa. And a very, very nice lady called me and said, what's it for? So I explained to her that, you know, it was some cottage that, that was on the same property that the house is on. And, and I told her, I said, I, I know, you know, you knew your father and I knew you used to rent it, I don't know how it's ever come that way, but. Those three supplements total, they were for seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, so they got going back to two thousand and seven.
Right.
Uh, thirteen hundred and seventy-four thirty-two. The bills went out, and then the second bath, she called me and she says, that cottage hasn't been used in ten years.
Yeah.
It's not been rented in ten years. And she says, it is a wreck. And I said, okay. I said, then I'll make, those good day, I'll make arrangement to come down and look at it. She said, different things are falling apart on it and, and it's not in heaven, heaven. And so I said, that's fair enough, uh, these again were supplemental bills.
So how did she intend to rent it out as far as, and they were gonna rent it?
No, this guy wanted to rent it. His, his daughter had gone through boat and guy or something, and his older daughter or something, and she rented it years and years ago. So he remembered where it was, so we're gonna look at it. And it's gonna be interesting what I say, I mean, it's got value, obviously.
Right.
You know, my own thing's probably of this kind of value, that this was.
So you're asking, um, you're asking us to grant the abatement so that you can go. So you're asking, um, you're asking us to grant the abatement so that you can go do a new assessment?
That's right. Do three newer supplementals. They'll be lower than this one, but it doesn't matter because she hasn't paid him anyway, so. And, and they're in addition to the commitment anyway, so.
Okay.
So, Tom, if you, she says, you've got the garden on through.
Yeah.
They're in records. You, you've got to abate them and then go issue three, three new ones, and that's, that's what I intend to do.
Okay. I move that we grant the abatement in order that a new assessment can be done on this property.
I second it.
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
That is account number forty-four, one Stover Court, owner Suzanne Van Stover.
Can I back him in your life?
Okay.
Was that fucking every tax rules?
Hmm?
Was that property ever in the tax rules, that cottage? Yeah, probably, the two thousand and seven. It was? Yes.
Was lost in vision? When they said they rebought.
Yeah.
Have you ever been on a reboot? It was, I think, when, when we had the, the other company built through, one that one ways. There was three that they lost. And one of them was the car that came down the middle of nowhere. And the woman never got a tax bill for about ten years. She had three something, that's never come in for ten years. That happens. I mean, they're, they're only allowing twenty minutes per counter. And they only. Agreed to, to do ninety, ninety-five percent of them, depending on if they could get in from building or whatever. Or if they could follow the tax man, so. This is the top one. This is the big one. This, uh, I'll go ahead and read this.
Yeah.
Where is this?
This is.
Right down the boat hatch?
Yeah, it is, it is.
Okay. So what did you base your little grade on?
Okay, this is what I do. Uh, when I first assessed it, all of those was a seller. And, uh, that's what he told me at the time too. And, uh, so, but, uh, so I went back the next year, this year. And I got plans, the architectural design plans, and then, because he had called me and he said he's up, that, that he was paying too much for the house. The land's bad enough, too much for the house. And so I, he, he gave me a list of thousands of new houses in town to compare. It's pretty hard. A lot of them are not same style houses and stuff like that. So I said, "Well, I would go over the plans again, uh, and see what I think after I make a complete assessment of the house itself." So I called him up and he said, uh, "Come down." He said, "If I'm not in my wife's area, we'll, we'll take you right through the house." And I did. And obviously, uh, I could see that, that he dropped a grade anyway. You know, that he was pretty bright on when he said, these other houses that, that he had mentioned were a brand number were the same grade or lower than his. And then I realized that after going through the house, yeah, and the house was assessed one grade too high. And that's by using the plans. I tried to make sure as you, you know, getting to the, the, uh, the type of, uh, you know, materials that we're using and everything, but... So I had to commit and I had to plan and, uh, once I went inside that house and could see, because part of it was not a full cellar, it was lich, it was on top of lich. So I just made the, the, the grade lower. As you get into the, the higher grades in houses, it, it puts them up quite a bit, especially when the house is quite valuable.
Yeah.
And it's easier to put it up much better than the wall. It's just one grade.
Yeah.
So I, he called me, uh, I was quick and I, I told him what I found. And then he said, "No," I said, "whatever you say it is, it's, it's fine with me." So, uh, this is what I felt was reasonable. Little evaluation of the house, sixty-seven and two. And with an abatement of seven oh five six.
So what do you value in the house that name?
Oh, three something, three.
Three eighteen?
Yeah, three eighteen, but he's got, uh, other, all buildings and that stuff that go with it, bring it up to three forty something.
Yeah. Okay. So I move that we grant the abatement of seven hundred and five dollars and sixty cents to Pearson's, uh, that you twenty-two lot twenty-five.
I think they're twenty-five B, aren't they? Oh, no, they're twenty-five, they're twenty-five.
Twenty-five B is, now we're getting close to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I guess he, he don't want it by parking it, I think the guy knows it, no. We, we could see it coming, but.
She says, "Uh-uh." It's not gonna happen. No one's gonna grant their land if you're parking down there, so you can just give it up.
Has he, has he worked on the house a long time or not been involved in what I saw?
I don't know. I have not been in it. There's a motion that's born.
Do you have a second?
Second. Second.
All right, so we're granting the abatement. All right.
Coming your way. So are there any more coming down the pike?
Hmm?
Any more abatements coming down the pike?
Not that I can see. I think the time run out pretty quick, hang on. So it'd be pretty sketchy.
Yeah, you can't remember the date.
It's in factory.
Yeah.
Um, is this a good time to, uh, don't bring up this, uh, switch to Trio?
Yeah.
All the time?
Let's go to the end ball, yeah. Absolutely.
You wanna do it?
Well, because I've dealt with both programs. Uh, what is happening right now is, uh,
Okay.
Yeah, I can see, I can see a couple things that's.
That's off, isn't it?
No.
No. Small.
There we go. Let's check and make sure it's not feet one. There we are. There.
Well, to start with, I know we have an awful deal to get a commitment done this year. It was no picnic. Seems like every year it's how and how to be at the two programs come together. But it took a while and to get it done. The Trio program and, and what, what is happening in town is we're at a hundred percent and ninety-eight percent. Fine. But what we, what's coming up in abatement is the waterfront property undeveloped on, on title lots. We've got five and six sales of it. We're, we're assessing about three hundred, three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand, some about one hundred and fifty, five, one hundred and sixty. Now, what's taking place is an oversight because all prime lots in town on deep water are sold for anything a lot more than what we get assessed for. So that kind of overshavers the whole thing. You throw it all together, it looks good. But there's two factors to assessment, and the other one is quality rating. And that's because they take all the, the, the same type of property and evaluate the quality of the sales. Well, somewhere, that quality on those sales that I'm telling you about on, on, oops, I probably undeveloped is getting thrown in there, but it's throwing that rating off. Even though the, the, the assessment ratio is good, it's causing the quality rating to be bad. So, and I think the state picks up on that too as well. The problem with, there, there's two things, two problems with the only. And one of them before I left Old Man and gave it to the guy, the trainer, that I could see the ratio dropping fast. And I said, "The land seems to be good, but the buildings are not." And I said, "I would advise you, or you hire somebody, do sales ratio study on this." I said, "Because you, you know, the ratio's dropping, it only dropped seventy percent," and bingo. And as you can see in the paper, he did. Well, he did it or somebody else did it. And they raised all the buildings in town twenty percent. They left the land alone, but they raised them in town to try to stop this flow of the ratio dropping. And justifiably so. A friend of mine, uh, in Pittsburgh, built a house, so he priced everything up. He squeezed a mirror, you know, and that, and it got up to a hundred and eight thousand. And last time I talked to him, he says, "All that material and stuff is gonna cost me almost a hundred and fifty." So you can see materials in the houses are good. That's a factor we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Well, not as bad as Old Man, but, you know, if they, the sales are really, they're coming in a lot higher than what we got it assessed for.
What are the ones that are coming in lower? I mean, there's some, the lot right next to us that I think was assessed at four hundred and sold for one sixty.
Yeah, undeveloped.
So it's, I mean, it's, so that, how, how, that, that seems to be.
Yeah, that's one of the sales they'll use. But that, that probably the lot next to you is probably on metal water than what I'm buying though.
Yeah, but how we, how we, that's not.
Okay, it's true, let's go with the trio.
No, but it's, it's, you're talking about the sale ratio, that's, we're not, the scaffold sale is much less than what the appraisal value is.
Right, 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 right. And that's reflected in the sales ratio studies that they do. They take those things, the state does them, and sends them back to us. And that's how they say what our, our assessment ratio is. And then they also send that to the quality rate, and the quality rate, ooh, we're in on the entry now. With Trio on the land, you, you've got a factor that drops undeveloped land about twenty percent per lot. That would have a good effect on, on trying to do a, a very good effect. How much, how, how it would be to convert it, I don't know, but I, I, I think that you need to look at the possibility of somewhere down the road, if we don't do something, then you will probably gonna end up for the, for the revaluation probably, you know, far from being lost.
So if you don't do Trio and you drop land by twenty percent?
Yeah.
How do you make that up?
You don't. They, they have to come in and they have to do the formulas that Vision is done. And associate him with whatever the Trio formula will spell, so it's spitting up the same thing.
So does Trio work, even with the buildings or?
Hmm?
Does Trio?
Trio, I don't know, but the buildings, it, it, I hope we don't have to go that route, raise up the buildings up down twenty percent. That may be down the road, I don't know, but you could do that with a ratio study as well.
I don't think you'd need to, because I think you would have more buildings than undeveloped land.
And there's a tremendous amount of building happening also that's gonna.
Well, the problem for commitment is that Vision is the, Vision is the program that was instituted when the last evaluation was done, right?
Right, yeah.
But Trio is the program that we use for building.
Trio is used for building, and Trio is a, is a program I use in Old Man.
And it's commonly used in my small towns, more than Vision is my, my understanding.
Yeah, yeah.
And this were because this year, undeveloped land also on, on water, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Not only that, but it is, well, probably more simplified too as well. Like when you do the personal property. I mean, if you really wanna get specific with, with the vision, you probably, you've got about ten thousand different items you can, you can go through the computer's lap.
I think you miss a lot of tax numbers on personal property in this town. I don't know if there's a way to make up for that.
Well, there's, there's, well, plus we have more personal property placed in Pittsburgh. And you've got more than Old Man had. I mean, because we've got, we have a lot of commercial.
I have a lot of family and a lot of individuals in business, and I know you're not taxing a quarter of the personal property. So I just wonder if there's a better way to track.
Well, the, the, the idea of tracking the personal property is for them to send a disclosure.
Are we getting them?
Some, sometimes we get them and sometimes we don't. If they, if we don't get them, then they're gonna get a bill for just what they had last year.
See, I don't think that's right. I, I think there should be some kind of penalty or they need to disclose, because every year they're adding two.
Yeah, most of them are, and they're, and they're not, not accounted for, and of course then you have Betty taking all up. And, and they don't want to pay the town, so they want, want to pay the state, uh, get it free. So most of them, most of them, if they buy a new piece of equipment, they're gonna put it right through the Betty program. But at least we get some back out of the Betty program. Not as if we're gonna get the whole percentage of it.
I just think there should be some penalty for people not reporting on a yearly basis what their personal property is. And typically, it, uh, is a business. There are some other people that do, but it's, it's small.
Well, it is. I mean, and that was one of the things too, that, that we brought up a long, long ago, that, uh, you know, if they had to have an application to be a business in town.
Right.
You, you would have that business in, no, 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 why that business is, and you're having them every year.
Right.
Even if they file, you'd still go back, see, if they're not living in Berkeley.
Yeah, so in the future, we might wanna think about something to hold out on.
You do, because we are, we, we pick up a lot of personal property, more than other small towns that we have. And a lot of it has to do, I mean, uh, every April, we send, send it out, the application note to all businesses. And some will get back and some they don't. I mean, if you, you know, maybe a town like this, it hits, you know, personal property is pretty heavy, which is nice because it keeps the taxes low for, for towns. Like, sometimes at Pittsburgh, what they do, they just, if you're in business or a plumber or somebody like that, they just give you a bill for three thousand dollars worth of stuff.
I can see, if we ever look at flat, a flat tax, that would be more than what we're currently collecting. I mean, would every business be charged to fifteen hundred dollar personal tax for that?
I'm not sure we can do that.
No.
No.
No, not only that, but that, you know, you, you have the Betty program and, and believe me, I mean,
I was getting better.
The states, the states, the, the wants that cap track to, he, and what we take and, and what we declare as Betty or whatever, right, and, and say, "It's all right to use Betty." So they keep a pretty firm hand on what we get, but they do give us some back. So they keep a pretty firm hand on what we get, but they do give us some back. It's not as if we get it all, but we get some back. And it's a lot of money. It's, you know, two, three million dollars worth, maybe more, four million, maybe a, it goes through Betty rather than Delta. The Better, the Better program is, that's fine, but a lot of the stuff on these accounts is very stuff. And it drops to 30% and then don't drop anymore, assume that we still have it.
So should we, should we switch totally to Trio?
I think we need, again, we were gonna bring these people in and we're gonna do it. And as I said, down the top one too, to see how they do it and make sure that they can do it properly. Because, you know, they're still gonna use Vision's formulas, and they're gonna adjust it to that formulas.
Until, if we, if we did a revaluation, would we be out of Vision altogether?
Yeah, but it would be up to you people to decide what you want, what you want.
That would be the cleanest way to get it done, because there wouldn't be, you know, all of that extra work trying to get the formulas to match.
Would it be likely if a revale would find the lost pieces of property?
And would a revale increase individuals' taxes?
It would, the houses.
Significantly, I would think.
Yes, the 20%, 25% building cost.
But then don't we just drop the, can you fluctuate the mill rate to keep it to where it's at? Would it wash out? Where everyone raised?
It's always gonna be there.
There's more houses that tails.
Yeah, but if you, if I have a tax bill that's $5,000 and I change my rate to Trio, so my house goes up 20% but then I drop my mill rate 5% or whatever it is, is it...
It wouldn't be one to one?
No, it isn't necessarily related to the other.
But we really don't know what's gonna go up and what's gonna go down. I mean, there's going to be some of each.
Right.
I don't think there's gonna be a lot going down.
But if you address the mill rate at the same time, you put it into effect.
You have to address the mill rate if your evaluation drops pretty high, which it won't affect everybody the same way.
Right. There, any...
The bigger the houses, the more it's gonna increase.
Right. Then the newer siding, the more it's gonna...
It's my opinion, if we have a quality problem, if we truly have a quality problem, we can't let, you know, a different assessment keep us from doing the revaluation. We have to have an equitable assessment.
Yes, right.
Absolutely.
And if we do indeed have a quality problem, I don't know that we do or not, then we need to be reasonable and say, "Hey..."
My concern is we have a significant quality problem.
Yeah, then we should be talking about when and how to get the revale done, rather than how do we put off having a revale? Let's give ourselves a nice jumping off point where we know that our assessment is correct.
Is there a way to do a test file against, where we take our data and plug it in the Trio? Can they come in and look at it and say, "Here's what, here's what it is today on Vision, and here's what the same 30 assets look like over here?"
That's what hopefully can do.
So maybe we should bring them in and talk to them, have a, they could go meeting.
They were gonna come in a year, two years ago. Because to me, you know, to me, I thought it might be a hard thing to do. But maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
They might be able to take our data and before we flip the switch officially and...
Yeah, great, but what if the data is wrong? That's what I'm saying. What if our quality is out of whack? Then what would the plan of that be?
So could we still do a sampling, I'm wondering?
I mean, I would look at a sampling and see how close it comes in. I mean, that's, you need to just evaluate it. I mean, if it's completely out of whack, then...
All right. First of all, you need to know if you can do this, right? If you can transfer the information over.
I don't know that we can, we should ask.
That's, that's the place to start. But that's one concern, that's one concern is the data transfer. The second concern is the revale, but you're gonna start with someplace. And you're gonna start with, see if you can do this this way.
I think the sensible thing to do, because it seems as though many of our issues start with the difference between Vision and Trio. And Trio seems to be the more appropriate software for smaller towns. So if we can, if we can make a transfer, then that would be an option. The question is, because, because of the differences that you were talking about in the way that different waterfronts are assessed, et cetera, et cetera. Is that a Vision thing or is that a Trio thing? How, how do we, how do we make sure that our data is accurate? As accurate as can be since humans are doing that?
Well, like, if you go into the waterfront, you know, we get five different types of waterfront. And two of them are very expensive. Then you go into Trio and they just go, this one in Old Man just went 320 bucks a foot, a linear foot. And then as you go up to a lot more footage, the ratio will go down. In other words, there would be a depreciation with more footage. With this, they don't care what you've got, 100 feet or 500 feet.
The first egg or the first egg.
They're gonna get you for whatever it is. And the waterfront, the type of waterfront is gonna dictate what you can pay.
I have to believe, I mean, before, I think we should ask them about just a data transfer and look at it. And just, I mean, we don't have that many pieces of property here that you couldn't look at and just compare how they look.
No.
And it's not, it's not 100,000, we don't have that much, I mean, you could, it'd be an easy, in theory, an easy data transfer, we should talk to them.
Right. If they can do that, I've never heard of that happening, but we can certainly ask.
But there has to be a judgment, they, they gotta weigh it, evaluate.
With computer, computers nowadays, they may. I mean, the indication was that they could do it.
The problem has been that it has not been possible to get it done effectively, efficiently. And if it was only happening in West Bath, I would say that we have a problem in West Bath. But this is not what they tell me when you go away to tax assessor's camp. That anybody who's trying to do what we're trying to do goes through nightmares. It's not, it's not a problem.
And my understanding is that in order to determine whether or not our evaluations are correct, we would have to manually go through every single account. And if we're going to do that...
But that's, I mean, there's not that many, a lot of accounts, but it's not 100,000. I mean, how many cats do we have?
How many personnel do we have in general?
How many parcels do we have right now?
1,700, that's not a lot, I mean, to me, it doesn't seem like a lot of property.
That's one of the concerns, that is Christine pointed out. If the values aren't just, then you can't do that.
But you can at least look at it, evaluate it, and then decide how...
If we have an inclination now that some of the evaluations aren't right and consistent, it may be the best thing to just check out, you know, revale, and then you've got two problems solved with a revale. As far as bad assessments and data transfer.
But how do we make sure with the revale that we're doing it properly?
You make sure that, you know, you're the company you're hiring to do this.
And you get a company that's familiar with coastal made.
Right.
And not Vision.
Vision, Vision has been us from day one.
Are there any other systems besides Trio or Vision? Are there any other systems besides?
It would make sense for us to use Trio because we're using it for everything else. And it's simple and it's good for just small accounts. It's what we should be using.
Yeah, it's what we would have done.
Yeah, because then it's just, when we're going into building and collections, the file information just transfers cleanly. Instead of two different programs trying to communicate with each other.
For example, when I was at Old Man, it took us about three hours to do the commitment.
As opposed to days.
Everything, the Trio process, different loss, it may have a problem, another number problem.
But yeah, I mean, you could go through with 1,700 parcels. You have an idea of what ones are somewhat accurate?
Who's gonna do the math?
Well, because the other thing is, the other two kick us out of the buildings. Unless you have a very high control of buildings, I suppose, you would, with the program, with a program that would, you know, go in and just tackle that one problem with a sales ratio study. And then the biggest problem I see, and you've made a little bit too, is, is the fact that the undeveloped waterfront is not, is assessed way too high. And that's why we're gonna run into the problem of loyalty. Because even though, and heavens knows, you know, that piece down by me, it was assessed at 750,000, they paid 1.1 million dollars to roll down. And now, you can see that all over the place. The prime law...
But that, but that takes you into the sales ratio, the sales, what do you call it? Sale ratio formula, that if we can start to track, if it was valued at 700 and is sold for 1.5 million, that becomes their new plain, their new plateau, it doesn't plus the house.
Yes, but it comes in and holds our ratio. It holds our ratio back at 100%, but the quality rating is gonna, is gonna be bad, because the sale is bad.
In Maine State law, you don't assess on the basis of the sale. You assess on the basis of what the evaluation is. It's, it's not, it's not sales-based. You know, it's not...
Well, that's intelligent. Why would you use factual data to calculate anything?
Well, because, because it's, it maintains a certain level of fairness. Because if the lot down the road sells for half a million dollars because somebody who has way more money than most people who live in West Bath decided that was an attractive lot, that's gonna affect me. My house hasn't sold for 500,000 and I don't have the money to pay the taxes, so that puts me out of my house. That's not fair either. So that's one of the reasons why you don't base the whole neighborhood on what somebody else decided to spend their money on. So that's the only thing in Maine's property tax that seems fair to me. When you're surrounded, when you're surrounded by waterfront, as most people are in West, many people are in West Bath, you're, you should not necessarily be at the mercy of somebody else's whim and millions. So that's the genius of the way that Maine does it.
Well, you gotta, it's a controlling law eventually.
You are somewhat affecting the matter a lot, because your sales...
Right. And because then you become a rich coastal town.
And if the town decides to move forward with the revaluation, if you're like, "Yeah, let's put it forward", you know, that holds us a good step for a good 15 years.
When was the last time?
We know that we have a clean assessment.
2006, 2007?
2007, yeah.
2007 was...
And, and the current, and the current Vision program was one that you recommended against, as I said.
I did.
On the basis of your experience as an assessor, you would have made that, that recommendation.
At that time, I was working with Trio already. Yeah, I could see the difference. And the fact that when, everybody's have to have a revale at that time, everything would boom in. And we went on for a revale appetite, probably the only two was, nobody's come in with both the masters.
But the 2007 revales was right before the market.
That made a big difference.
So you can't, I mean, if those values are not, they haven't come back.
There was, there was a lot of things missed in that revale.
Yeah. So what is the cost of a revale?
Two, 250?
Yeah, about the 250.
And do the citizens of West Bath have any say in this?
Absolutely, yeah, they can say they want it.
They certainly agree, if your rate falls too low, the state says you will do it.
Yeah, if you drop below 70 of the quality rating, the state will tie it, then they could, they could say, "Hey, you need to do something."
If we do it proactively, then the town decides.
But this still goes to town, you know?
Oh, it has to, yeah.
Yeah, it's really not money for us to decide.
Is it put on a ballot? Or is it put on, is it just discussed?
It's on the board.
It's well discussed, I'm sure.
And that's why we're talking about it now, because it's a big decision, it's an important decision. And frankly, you know, I don't wanna put you on the spot, Ron, but you're not gonna work here forever.
No, I figure, I figure you got two years to go, not a lot yet.
You know, what, thinking about moving forward, if we end up without Ron, and we're dealing...
And his institutional memory.
And his institutional memory, and his knowledge of how to kind of jockey these two programs. And we're left, what are we gonna do?
Well, even that, even if you go through a revale, it's gonna be helpful for us here.
Yeah.
Because this, this 20 minutes, 25 minutes each account, it just, sometimes just don't count.
You can't.
Just don't count it.
20 minutes?
And I would rather go through a revale with Ron here, sitting at the table, than trying to do it with somebody else or nobody else.
Does someone roll up to each major property?
No?
Yes, there you go.
They're supposed to be...
They have a 5, 6% that they, they leave out because they can't actually can't get it or they can't find it.
I think I remember the last one.
A lot we might not find.
They missed a lot of the cottages.
They're not familiar with the town.
No, I just remember a lot of it.
They started looking at cottages in the fall, and wanted to go see if there's no one here.
So what they do, they give, oh, they old cat, make a noise like it. Either that or they just don't find it very...
Kind of like the census.
So what we need to do if we did a revale, we'd have to have it started in spring and summer, so it's starting...
Has to complete in the summer. You can't start in the summer, you have to complete it in the summer.
So that you have, you have more access to more of the waterfront properties that are on the seasonal.
You'd have to, you know, you only have to kind of, kind of have to first go through that process, opt in first.
Right.
And start doing it, but you know, you have time for this year.
Right, no, we can't do it this year. What we'd have to do is get ready for it, put it on next year's warrant.
I think we also have to look at the budget.
Well, it's a $250,000 expense, it's not planned.
It's quite an expense, I mean...
Yeah, but still, it's not something that would be wise to put out forever.
But it's not just that we, if, I'm not saying that we don't do it, then we don't do something else.
Right. But it wasn't discussed in our last meeting, we had the people, so I think it needs to be put out there before we do any...
Oh, we, it's something, if we spend 250, someone's gonna have to come up with a wish lesson.
If we have, if we have, if we can get the information of can the data be transferred?
Yeah.
And how can that be done? That would be one question. The question about whether or not our data is accurate is a whole, is a whole other issue.
It is, I've had experience.
And I think that that, that is ultimately the most important question. Because if somebody is going to challenge a bill, it's going to be on the basis of whether or not the property was assessed and was all, and were all the other properties in this category assessed properly. So it's the basis of that, it's the basis of that original valuation that's really the question of whether or not it's a legitimate tax.
And I remember right, your job increases by 100% because a lot of people are just doing...
They will be, yeah. Well, that's the way it is.
We're gonna need 500.
They'll have hearings and everything, they go through the process, they have, I don't know how many hearings they had here. And people come and scream and yell. The only other thing I can see is, yeah, I've noticed that most of the non... The, the, the only other thing I can see is, yeah, I've noticed that most of the non-waterfront property houses, developed lots. That's something from when we got accessible too, but that, in my opinion, the land is nothing wrong with the land, but it's, the buildings in that respect, because they know that it costs five more to build that house than they did when it was new.
Well, I just have always found it curious that no matter where I have lived, everybody wants their property to be highly valued when they sell it. And they want it to be lowly valued when they pay their taxes. Now, you can't have it both ways, really.
Come on, Madeline, I know.
So we got seventeen neighborhoods in town, and each farm, one of the neighborhoods. Best, best on that, bet on that reval that we did.
Mr. Rogers?
You know, neighborhoods.
Yeah, you got a neighborhood.
So, I was just thinking, with the fire truck and the sub-inaugural.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've got a lot of the expenses there, yeah, and first points, okay, so.
That's why we have to talk about this early in the year. The, the problem, the problem is that the whole thing is a house of cards if our valuation is not correct. We have no, if the valuation is not correct, we have no, we have no real basis for raising the money that we raise.
We can't turn around and, and raise their bill rate and then go back out and raise their taxes and start, we, we start spending all of this, we can't spend...
Well, we're getting to be known as Jim, the administration, this time.
I don't see that.
We, I mean, I just, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna have a problem if we start putting huge expenses on the table and then go out saying, now we're gonna have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar bill, and your taxes are gonna go up, and...
You're not solving that, somebody's gonna have to explain that to me. The problem, the problem is, I think you just need to carefully think. A, you have to have your evaluation based on something that is legit across the board. Then, it costs money to live. It costs money to keep roads. It keeps, it costs money to have a school. It costs money to have good people working for you. I don't like spending money on things like taxes either. But it requires money for us to live together well. So then you make sure the evaluation is accurate, you make sure that your assessments are fair, you make sure that people who work for the town are working for their, doing their best,
but you also make sure that you don't take people that have been citizens of this town their whole life and you tax them out of the house.
Absolutely. But we have huge expenses, we have a fire truck coming in, we have Sabine Road, we have First Point Road, we have...
Is there anything that we could have done without in that list?
No. But there may be things that we can do without that are on our wish list.
Oh, there's lots of things there.
What you need to talk about is how can we best leverage our revenues so that we can do our due diligence and do the things for the community that they expect and they want? And without raising their taxes.
But, but we need to make sure this is what the community wants and not the people sitting around this table.
Well, we can't, we can't make that decision, because, thank God, we're not... But you're tasked with having to put it forward, which is...
Oh, I don't have a problem with putting it forward, but I just don't, I think we need to make sure that this is what the citizens of West Bath want and that...
And, and then, and then it's voted on, when it's voted on, it's voted on. And then it's, and then it's okay, you know, and then it's...
Until the state of Maine says that we're out of whack and we have to do it anyway.
And the reality is every ten to fifteen years, I mean, every single other town around that... Everyone is doing it, so not to give it a peer pressure, but it's not in on our door. But it's not gonna vote you in, you're the house.
Well, state laws do say that we're supposed to do it, yeah.
When your ratings fall down.
Yeah.
Well, within a certain time period, it's an either or.
Yeah, but they won't complain too much usually if their ratings are still good.
I think we can appear to town slowly. Not talk about it for this year, maybe next year.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna...
We need to buy into it.
You're gonna talk about it during the next many years.
Right, you need to talk about it.
But I guess you're dropping too much too soon with, and I'm hearing this in the community, with the fire truck, with Sabine, oh, this town's not used to spending that type of money.
It's a lot of money that you spend in the next short timeframe that is gonna make some people unhappy.
What did we pay last time, seventy-five or one point two five? What did you pay for reval last time, seventy-five or one point two five?
One forty-nine.
Need to look at how we're spending our money.
Yeah.
The other company, they had a target of two hundred and fifty two and a half.
For a reval in this calendar year. We have a huge pickup.
Like Madeline said, it would be this year anyway.
I know, I mean, I'm gonna make sure it's with the town.
We have a lesson coming up to fall anyway.
Absolutely, and we may all be looking because...
We have a lot of trouble with the Democrats, we did, we barely address them.
Well, let's not get too political on that one.
No, we don't wanna, because there are a variety of, of views on the table. Again, I think we all have wishes, we all have wants, but again, if we don't make sure that this is something the town can buy into, then who, I, I was elected to make sure that it's something the town people want and not be administrative office, so let's just wear on that.
I mean, that ratio's still good.
I think, I, before, I think before we even put our toe in the water in this, I'd like to see a data conversion and just see what it looks like, if that's at all possible.
It would be done.
If it's, just, just to temper the water, see what it looks like, and see how this transitions to a new program. If it's, we may be surprised if it's close.
Yeah.
I mean, who knows? Let's just take a look at it, if it's, if it's at all possible, let's see what it tells us before we make any other decisions.
Try to stay it off.
Well, the thing, the thing is, that might be the simple way to do it. But if the data is flawed in the beginning, we're transferring flawed data.
But you can adjust the data after a reval, also. I mean, it...
Yeah, I'm trying to think in my head how this works.
Yeah. But if your, if your sense value changes, or I build a six-car garage that gets added to my tax card, my game goes up. So it's, I mean, there's things that you do that, yeah, it's just that the, the process itself isn't that simple.
Yeah, and if you're paying to have all the data transferred over and then you're paying for a reval... And again, I think it's simple for people to say that are working, again, that I can have to pay my parents' taxes for the last five years, I don't wanna put any more elderly people in Jacobiaan out of their homes, and I don't want the kids to have to pick up the tab. It would be great if we could do this and maybe make some kind of tax cut for people that are retired, or, I, I don't know, but...
Can do that, you know?
Well, there used to be, there used to be the, um...
There's a home, another tax or homestead, I think there was not a homestead, but there is a, there is a tax that reduced their, as, as long as the parcel stayed within the family, like, there is a, there is something that, I don't know what it's called, but...
I don't even, I remember.
There is definitely some there.
My, my grandparents got it and I can't remember what it was called.
And, and then rate didn't change until it transferred outside of it, like...
I think the state paid it, the town still got their money.
I remember, there's definitely something that addressed it, say, I'm like, parcel. Do you, do you know anything about it?
A homestead.
Just a homestead, yeah. No.
There's, there's a better...
Where it was.
No, well, it was something that, that, I don't mean, globally, Maine and state of Maine that protected family parcels, so that, that rate stayed until it transferred out of the family.
Yeah.
Yes.
What process is thirteen?
I know, I know.
If, if that program was in place, we would know about it because we handle the exemptions, that is not...
A separate program, that's the...
Forman, right, three forms, right, Forman will...
If somebody doesn't pay their taxes, it's a certain age.
Yes.
It's unconstitutional.
You have to try to find a way for help for them.
Right, an elderly person who could...
But in that, in that same, that same elderly, there was something, and I'll have to, I'll have to see if I can find it. There was something that, at, at, at an elderly rate, that this value stayed the same until it changed hands.
I don't think, no.
No, the, the new program is on foreclosure. If, if, if they, if the person is elderly, they get the difference between what's owed
Right.
and the market, whatever the sale price is, after the taxes are paid.
And you want the town to find, help them to help pay the taxes.
Yeah, to figure out a way.
Yeah.
So, it is canned worms, but the, the base, the basis is you have to be sure that your data is valid in the first place.
And I think that's where all our problems lie.
Yeah, the, the first primary problem is how A neighborhood's being assessed, is it by the same formula?
Right.
And we've had that for years, that people screaming, oh, like, hell's too high. How's that, A neighborhood's being assessed in a neighborhood, they use the same formula?
Right.
And we're like, oh, like that.
Right, but as, but as long as you prove that, then they, they can't complain. As long as it's fair and consistent, you can't complain.
Right, as long as it is.
As long as it is, yeah, right.
But that's not, I mean, that's...
And then you have, you have...
I really, I presume if we have the seventeen neighborhoods...
You do, I mean, you've had them, how many times, Williams Island coming, coming full of boys? And some of these sales are, ah, three hundred thousand dollar taxes, uh, tax evaluator, being under twenty-five thousand bucks, eh? But everybody else is paying the same thing, there's a, the same formula, this is the reval, the country's set up.
Other than Robyn Town, who would change in this area? This is true.
Oh, that's good. Any small coastal town, right, in this region, I can tell you they're...
Well, which, which, that's good.
And around Georgetown.
Georgetown, I think, too.
Okay, can we have them come to a meeting?
I don't know if they will. Probably not in the evening. They have limited resources and they're up in Maymore. But during the day, I think they would.
Let's do it.
They're bringing.
Well, I just, I want to hear, let's talk about it, let's see what our options are before we make a decision one way or another. That's a step. And how do you, we'll see, who knows?
I'm just glad we're talking about it.
Yeah, because it's gonna be this, as much as we're talking about it, imagine what the town is gonna be talking about.
Right.
But if we do bring them in and let them look at it and see if it is, can be done, that's a step in the right, if they can't do it, or can't do it to, to my satisfaction. And if that's the, the question of you, then you know you're gonna stop right then and there, you're gonna have to step, and then you'll have a breakup.
Right, so maybe you'll find out some things that they're doing have improved, they're doing better, and maybe it's an easy marriage.
And there's also, there's also the possibility that given, that depending on what the lot is and the quality of the construction and all that stuff, some medical bills go down in the evaluation. They don't all go up.
No.
No. They equalize in four hours.
Well, they're, they're out on more depreciation, they got two, so...
See, not with the price of lumber and stuff today and new. Because everybody who built a new house, even the ones on Stevie's lot that came in a certain amount, they're paying almost double that amount to you if the house is built. So are you gonna charge them based on what they paid to get that house?
Yeah.
Yeah. And it, it just skyrocketed, and the houses have worked back. But that's what the prices are currently.
And that's reflected in the sales right now.
That's the sale ratio piece that we were talking about also, and how it tempers the...
How do they put all those houses, five years from now, they don't get that money, and there's no way you're gonna... They're gonna fall apart like an old home.
But that's, that's the two points, you gotta look out for, the ratio and, and assessment ratio.
Do we have any other, 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 for the, for the, for the assessors?
No.
That was enough.
I'm Trio out. I move the adjourn quickly. Oh, here, stand up.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Ron. So our meeting on Thursday...